It's six o'clock and as customary, we always have a word of prayer before we start our meeting. So I've asked Commissioner Dorsey if he would lead us in this prayer at this time.
Let us pray. Precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in the United States of America where we have the freedoms that people often take for granted. Many sacrifices have been made and we are thankful for those who have sacrificed so that we may live the lifestyles that we live today and have the freedoms that we have today. We ask you be with the many, many women overseas protecting us, our country, and all of us. Protect those in a line of fire and emergency services, fire EMS, and law enforcement as they leave their families every day to come to work to protect us. We ask that you be with each member of this board and give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. And once the people's business is conducted, grant travel and mercies on those as we travel back home to our families. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's all stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to call the order of the Tuesday, February the 13th, 2024, Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to welcome each one of you here, whether you're here in person or by HTC Channel 3 or by our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. I welcome all of you. First on the agendas to approve the agenda, we do have some.
We do have some changes. Under 13A, the land development variance request, want to remove it. She couldn't be here tonight. And under 13, in that place, right there, the road damage bid for repair of the roads from the DTR on 29, to get permission to send it out, actually look over. And also, under 13B, had advertising for an open accessible works lot we found out about today.
May I move you? We approve the agenda amended. The agenda as amended. Get it right.
Got a commission, motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. One other thing, Cheryl. I'd like to put personnel on executive session.
Okay.
Q and A.
I'm in the most shit to do that.
Second.
Okay.
We have amended motion by Commissioner Dorsey, amended second by Commissioner Teasley. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. Okay. First on the agendas, approved minutes of January 23 regular minutes. Any additions or corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to.
Under 12B, the last line that shows the vote, four dash one, it says Commissioner Teasley abstained. I think just for clarity purpose, it should be four dash zero.
Yeah, should be four one.
Dash one.
Should be four one, one abstained.
Because there's nobody opposed. If you rigged at it, you might think that was the case.
Okay.
Just, it's a technicality, but.
Okay. All right. If no others, can we get a motion to amend those minutes as noted and then approve?
So move.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. All right. Now, the called meeting minutes of February the 5th. Any additions or corrections there? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. It's five of called meeting minutes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. Now, we'll move on to remarks. Anybody, guests, committees, authorities, we have none. Reports by constitutional officers, department aides, we have anything, Kim?
I just had one thing. You guys had approved the tax commissioner sending one check out to the Board of Education per month instead of biweekly. And that was approved by the attorney for the Board of Education this week. So we'll be circulating that. I'll get that to you. But y'all had already voted to approve that.
All right. Thank you for that update. County administrative report?
Got a January financial report plus I got a call from the tax commissioner this afternoon. And the checks on the mistake on the home debt exemption for the schools had been corrected. She got the checks made out in her office. They're going out in the mail now. So everybody should receive them. It's getting one in the next several days. For the month of January, revenues came in at $4,241,465. That should be the bulk of the property tax money this month. It'll dwindle down greatly in the next few months. The actual expenses was $1,272,295. That left a variance of a positive $2,969,171. Leave us a reserve so far this year of $3,82,214. Again, real property came in at 2.42296 on the property type that sells. Lost at 333,502. EMS is down as we expected with the change over the billing system at 43024. Vehicle tag fees came in at 15208. And that leaves us a reserve on the revenue side of the $3 million, $182,947 under the budget of the amount for expenses.
What's driving the decline in EMS fees?
They're changing over the billing.
So I mean, it's not going to be something we're going to have problems collecting.
Oh, no, no. It's what it is. They have, she's having to go back. We're changing different vendors. We're using the state system and the conversion from the states into the state system and back into our billing system. She's having to do a lot of handwork. She is about halfway through January. I talked to her the other day. So that should pick back up next month and go back.
Well, I was looking at that earlier. I know it's down a little more last month. Is there any, I mean, where's this money sitting?
It's not standing. It's actually she's.
It's not been built yet.
It's just a process.
It's got to be building.
Yeah. It's got to be, and the bulk of that's the insurance money. Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance.
Yeah, it's my question.
Yeah.
It's just the process of ability is not good.
Correct.
And it, and there'll be a month where it's above normal whenever everything's caught out. It'd be above when it catches up.
We got to answer any questions in my head.
Just worth noting, our LOST revenues seem to be declining some. I mean, they're still above budget, but we were in the high threes.
Idiot. You got, you'll have that bump at Christmas time when people spend an extra for Christmas. It should level back off. But yeah, it's declining some, getting back down to this is usually the lowest part of the year for the next couple of months till summertime is. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Chairman's report. I do not have anything at this time. So I'll move on to District 1. Do you.
I don't really have a whole lot as far as my district, but I did want to thank the, well, I thank all the departments for the hard work they do and all the services and everything they accomplish. But the road department got our signage up down Ness Heart School Road, Liberty Hill Church Road. It looks great. If you don't see that, then you know, obviously you just, your head's not right. So you're going to get ran over anyway. But it does really, look really good down there. So I'm going to thank them for getting that out there. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
Cheryl, do you know when they might get around to do that restriping like a Milford Road? You know, like the.
Well, myself and Commissioner Dorsey's been talking to them. It's on the schedule whenever they get here now.
They're doing some this week.
Yeah, they got a couple of them this week.
And also on the DTR right there for, they run that sewer line. You had any idea when they, I mean, I know the weather's been wet.
Right. And my understanding, talking to Milford Excavation and everybody else is a, the contractor for our telephone that left the place and they're supposed to be going about doing their fixing now.
That's all I got.
Okay. While we're talking about striping, is Hickory Cross and Rayford on that striping list?
I believe it was. Should be. I'll have to go look and see.
Should be.
Okay. Because I bet some folks asking about that. All right.
But that's totally separate than what's.
Yeah, that's separate than the.
Two totally different things.
Yeah, I get that, but.
Yeah. I mean, that's a separate, that's a separate striping bid. What we're talking about is paving is in with a paving bid.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to District, is that on again?
Yeah.
District 4, Commissioner Brown.
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. District 5, Commissioner Dorsey.
I don't have anything.
All right. Then we'll move on to old business, solar farm, moratorium extension.
I'll make a motion to extend the solar farm moratorium extension for one year.
Good for something.
Go a year.
Six months as long as you can extend it.
I made it to six months.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett, motions for a six-month moratorium on solar farms.
I'll second, but I want to make sure everybody understands that what we're doing here is for these large-scale solar farms, it's not going to prohibit somebody from putting solar panels on their homes if that's what they want to do. Just so everybody knows the difference between what we're talking about.
Yeah, this is commercial farms.
All right.
I just wanted to remind you all that we were looking at this around the holidays. On November the 6th, I sent you all an email with some ordinances that I had pulled from around the state. And then I also sent you an email a couple of weeks ago about the current legislation around solar farms. So there is a movement to protect some farmland that's going on in the House of Representatives. There's also a movement to address what happens when these farms need to be commissioned. So I know that both of those areas were concerned for you all to begin with. And they at least are getting some attention at the state level too. If you look back at that November the 6th, that'll give you an idea of what the different folks have been doing around the state as far as setbacks, buffer's, land size, ownership versus leasing and that kind of thing.
I read all that. And then the decommissioning part is the real problem, what I see in it.
They have a lot to expect. See it around 20 years is, and then they can be a junk yard or unless we got.
The fear is, these are LLCs that are leasing and they have nothing in them but this farm. And so when it's time to decommission, the LLC is.
Gone.
There's nothing.
In the property ownership.
Yep. All right. So that's something we need to think about.
Lots to think about, yes.
All right. All right. We got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. Okay. Then we'll move on to revolving loans.
This was a recommendation by the IBA. We have a little over 375 in our revolving loan fund, and that's what they're asking for, 375. Cheryl said that would leave a sufficient buffer in that account. We aren't supposed to amass a large amount in this. We are supposed to be loaning it out for these purposes. This is to add on to the building that Custom Design Power Controls is in. It is owned by their entity, Industrial Properties of Georgia. And so they said that Industrial Properties of Georgia, remember it's Inc. or LLC, LLC, would be the borrower on this and that they would put up that building for collateral subject to its credit line with Pinnacle Bank.
I'll make a motion. We approve. With the county attorney's blessings.
I pull the credit line at Pinnacle Bank. It's a 1.6 million credit line. And then CD Controls has, Pinnacle has fully, with the UCC, covered everything else, accounts, inventory, any other assets that CD Controls had on this property. So it, while it's just a credit line, it does cover the entire value. Plus, we have it taxed at 1.3 million and it's borrowed at the credit line at 1.6. So I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. It is a 10-year, revolving loan is a 10-year request. And the request was at three and a half. The last one you guys did was at three and a quarter. No, three and three quarters, I'm sorry, to RITZ. And I think historically, y'all have been at three and three quarters. But the request is at three and a half.
Three and three quarters.
Three and three quarters.
Any justification why it's three and a half? I mean, who made that deal as far as.
I don't know if he was.
Do we have an option?
Speaking off the cuff.
Well, the problem we run into, just so everybody knows, if we let this money sit in the county coffers, the DCA is going to come back asking for this money. It's there. It's a revolving loan fund so that multiple businesses can borrow. We've got multiple industries that have these RLF loans. And the Board of Commissioners has even done one ourselves one time years ago. So it's use it or lose it.
But as far as the taxpayers, though, I think we should try to get as much interest for that as we can. I mean, if it's a possibility, if it's not.
We just got to be consistent.
I responded to everyone on January the 30th. The last was at three and three quarters interest. And I did not get rebuffed on that. No one said, okay, that kills the deal.
Is the contract already done? I mean, pretty well.
Just so the people know about the interest. The interest is rolled back into this. So we still hold the interest back out.
Right.
We don't take anything off for you as a profit.
It all rolls in.
But it would accumulate faster.
Correct.
It would come back faster. Okay.
We haven't started the process as far as I know.
So Commissioner Dorsey made a motion to, for to issue the $375,000.
They're still at three and three quarter, right?
Whatever Kim's got laid out. I mean, that's.
The IBA recommendation was three and a half. And I was just pointing out to you all that we had been at three and three quarters.
All right, I second.
Okay, at three and a half per se.
For 10 years.
Okay, 10 years.
10 years.
Commissioner Bennett, second. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. All right. Now we'll move on to.
The business road bid. I've given you a copy of the bid I've had sitting waiting for a while, while there's been some negotiation going on for more money from GDOT. I think we've got to the point now, we got to go ahead and bid this out. And this is strictly for the five roads.
Beaver Dam Farm Road, Baker's Road, Baker's Bridge Road, Aitkins-Luxford, and.
Section of Airline Gold Mine from where we stopped passing back to the 29.
These are all roads that were damaged here in the DTR.
That's correct.
Correct.
And we have been rounding around, I have, with the DOT and spent probably about an hour yesterday on the phone. Our state representative has been involved with this as well. One of the things I've asked a question and I'm trying to get around is there's pending legislation in, under the dawn now to change LMIG to another name. And it's only going to be for this year, is my understanding. And it does away with a 30% match. As part of this, the Board of Commissioners has to come up with about $700,000. I strongly feel like this is not our issue. I don't feel like it's fair to us. However, that's what the current state law requires when LMIG funds are used. Everybody has to do the 30% match. So I'm waiting to hear back from the powers that be if this is an opportunity to take it out of this coming year's pot versus under the current LMIG pot. But we need to go ahead and get this stuff bid out so that we can go and get these things fixed, regardless of how it goes.
Correct. And then the amount we're looking at, that they ever approved on their share is just 2.3 something million. And again, like I say, we'll have to come up with 30% over that to match, which is about seven, somewhere around 700,000 range. That comes out of spot money. We do have the money to match the funds with, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Put it out for bid.
Put it out for bid.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion or questions? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. Next on the agenda is advertising for.
It's advertising for the open position. It's going to be on the accessible.
Should we put it out for advertising? We got any other open positions? Let's get them again, too.
No, we see we advertised everything last month. And this just came up today. So we'll have to re-advertise it.
If we've got any other open ones, I don't know that we have.
I don't think we do. And then, and the water authority will be on the next meeting agenda. We're going to have it on this one. But we got the check and the whole son hasn't got an ad. So we rerun the ad to be sure that the public had the opportunity to apply for it. So that'd be on the next meetings.
Water card, is that for board members?
Board members, correct. And those have to be done at the next meeting because it takes effect first tomorrow. So.
Okay, we've got, can you make a motion, Commissioner Dorsey, for the tax assessor? And if there's any openings.
I think DFAX boards.
Okay. Go ahead and advertise. Okay. You got a second.
Need to be second.
All right. Commissioner Brown, second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five of eight. All right. Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak? Public comment, if you would, sir, come to the podium. And this is about county business, not directed at any commissioner or anything like that. Okay.
Well, sir, how you doing?
I could not remember your name the other day.
I would love to.
That's what you told me then.
If you don't mind, state your name and.
Please, I'll.
Okay.
I just want to remind you all of our decorum policy. If there's something that you all needed to weigh in on, our ordinance requires that that be submitted to you three days ahead of time. So, subject to that, do as you please.
All right. Thank you.
Are you a friend?
I am.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Teasley is the only one that knows me. I'm Max Allen. I live, have property at 318 Hugh Dorsey Road. I've owned property in Hartwell since 1996. Owned this property since 2015. Come this late 45 years ago.
That's off Milltown, right?
Yes, off Milltown. I am a 28-year FAA aircraft inspector. I've worked with the DOT. I've worked with FAA, NTSB, and the Georgia State Fire Marshal's Office, and the Commissioners in Jackson County. Y'all approved this document, this lot, I would call it, which is three. Y'all approved this document, this, uh, lot, I would call it, which is 320 Hugh Dorsey Road. Y'all approved a 4.6 setback. February 9, 2099, y'all put forth new ordinance in Hart County. The setbacks are, as read in y'all's stuff, I think it's 120 feet deep, 100 foot wide. Road frontage 40 foot. Rear and side 10 feet. If lots of busts, private property, the only way this can be changed, if you have written consent from the both landowners. Am I wrong, sir?
It wasn't, I'm sorry. No, can it be changed?
No, no, that's y'all's codes. She's got a copy. I pulled this through y'all's ordinance. Last year, some man named Scott Phillips walked in here with this document and asked for it, that y'all changed these setbacks. My question to y'all, did anybody on this board walk out there or drive out there and look to see what the man was doing?
At that time?
Anytime since, or anytime.
I've been there.
Do you understand that our gutters are gonna touch each other? Sir, do you understand, at 4'8", my house is sitting at 3'. My house was, wait, let me get done. Our house was built before these back sets was put in, okay? My house was built in 1996, not for me, but it was built for the Cantrells. I own property at Appalachia Trail, bought it in 96, was gonna build a house on it in 2003 or '04, went to get a permit, 10-foot offset, both sides. So what I'm asking y'all is, how can y'all approve this without my written permission, 299's written position, and how can y'all approve having a house on top of another house? When y'all's codes state?
In 1999.
Y'all put them in effect in 1999. They're effective date 10-foot off the property line.
When was these properties subdivided?
When was this lot platted?
Who knows? It was Sidney Moore's stuff.
So it was prior to 1999.
It was way before the, that, and everything was grandfathered. So if it, if it was platted before the setbacks, it would have been grandfathered.
So...
So Terrell, can you pull it up on Q Public, Terrell?
Huh?
Can you pull this up on Q Public? I think we're all familiar with it.
Yeah, I figured y'all are by now.
But you made a statement, and I guess I, I questioned this, when you said your gutters were gonna touch.
My house is 3' off the line, 2' overhang. His put, his house is gonna be 4' off the line with 2' overhangs. Our gutters are gonna be right here.
But they're not gonna touch?
Well...
You said they were gonna touch, which means that somebody would be encroaching over a property line.
Correct.
So...
Not only is this a safety hazard for your county, it is, just cost me over 300,000, 400,000 dollars.
Excuse me. You cost me...
Sir, they have built, the, the house will be in my back window. He will be, when I open my downstairs blinds, they will be looking inside my bedroom. Inside.
So, you're saying your house is 3' off the property line?
Yes. Which was approved, I guess, by this board, not y'all, but this commission in 1995, '96. Ain't had nothing to do with that. That, that, that's some whatever. But y'all put these in to protect property owners. No, y'all put this in to protect property owners.
Right.
But if this, this subdivision was done prior to that, it's not gonna...
318 Hugh Dorsey and this other one is 320. So, so, sir, you, you, you asked me about mine. Why did y'all put this into effect if you're not gonna enforce it?
We are enforcing it.
But you didn't, you was gonna enforce...
We are enforcing it from this point on.
But you enforced it in 2003, and you enforced it five years ago, after I sold my lot at Hugh Dor, on, uh, Apache Trail, he was told he had to be 10-foot off the line.
Did he come to the division to ask for variance?
No, he pulled up specs.
Okay.
He pulled up y'all's bylaws.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, as a taxpayer in this county, we're supposed to go online and look and bring, get our stuff to this man right here. Site drawings, plans, everything, and ask to put that house on there. My question is just very simple. Why did y'all change y'all's codes for this man?
It wasn't done specifically for that man because we had, we have done this prior to that. We'll probably do it again.
Probably will.
Because of our precedence that we've set, where if it was platted prior to 1999, before that ordinance comes in, before the rules were set...
You can build right up to the line before then.
I know, I know, I know, I understand you, I'm not arguing that. But in that subdivision, nobody did.
Somebody, anything that's subdivided at this point on will adhere to those setbacks.
Well, unless it be from here on was before the...
But anybody that's been there, I mean, I don't think there's no comparison, whether you get it or not, that's...
What you pulled here, if, if someone comes in, you know, with a brand-new subdivision, they've got to meet a whole lot of things, but this is one thing. It won't be approved unless this, so these are, these are on the new subdivisions. And what they're telling you is, wouldn't these all be subdivision?
Well, they need to amend this to state that.
So they can make you take your house off?
Well...
Or would it be grandfathered in?
You tell me.
Okay.
You tell me. So my question now, okay, I got another one then, so he brought this up. I go down Hugh Dorsey Road and I buy the four houses in there, which is grandfathered in. I carry them down, putting new houses on there. Can I build them on the line?
Yes, you would be subject to a variance, just like this man was.
Not a variance, not a variance.
Well...
The platted subdivision is already there, it would be, it would predate...
That's the confusion being brought before this board instead of just Terrell signing off on it.
Correct.
He should be able to just sign off on it and go on, instead of bringing it forward.
We just recently had this same thing with Paradise Point, where the builder got right over on the line and the neighbors come in and complain that they were grandfathered because it was cited before the dates, and there's nothing with this out of our hands at that point, because that is the way the ordinance is set out there. There's a bunch of these subdivision...
I know there's a bunch of them. I know, I know. I've been up there a long time, I know a lot of people.
I know some of them is six inches off the line.
So, my question, y'all are the governing body of Hart, y'all took a code of evidence to protect the taxpayers of this county. So are y'all gonna let someone else come in on somebody else's property and build on the line when y'all have the rights to stop that?
There's a brand-new set of rules out there, and I, you rest assured, that, that the building industry is gonna change in Hart County, I promise you.
So as of right now, I feel, I've been screwed, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I feel like I just took about a $350,000 loss in property damage because now I had a house that you could look at my windows and my bedroom and see like Hartville. Now, because of this right here, I look out now and see a wall. When my wife opens the curtains downstairs, he's gonna, she's gonna have a man looking straight in on her bedroom, because nobody bothered to check into this before y'all signed off on this $3 million home sitting on a half-acre lot.
I'm not being disrespectful or rude in any kind of way, but to me, if this meant that much to you, how long was this land for sale?
Sir, I, I knew this was in effect, 40 foot, I knew 10 foot was in effect, I go out there on the front of my property, I look at the first date, it's 10 foot off.
The 10-foot didn't file, don't file this.
Thank you, I understand that now. Nothing applies in that subdivision. I go out, but I'm answering his question. So I walk out there with my tape measure, my property line over to the first date, 10 foot.
Okay.
Okay, there ain't nothing I can do to stop that, right? It's 10 foot, even under this.
Right.
We got stakes, these people put stakes all over that lot, you couldn't hit no hell high water, excuse me, what was gonna be built. They dug the, uh, foundation the last two weeks, and when they poured the soft footing, I go out there and look, I can't hardly walk between the property lines. I pull my tape measure and I go visit this man. If it's 10 foot, I don't say a word. If it's 10 foot at the front, if it's 10 foot at the back of that house, he's not in my bedroom window. The man angled the house into the property line, to block the view. Terrell, can you... That's what I'm saying. This house has always been on the market for years. I knew the owner. It showed right at four acres. He wanted to build a house on it, told he couldn't build a three, four-bedroom house with more than one bath. I've had multi-builders, not from Hart County, leaving Hart County out of all this, come look at that lot, 'cause I was trying to get my people to buy it and put a little two-bedroom, three-bedroom house on it. Said, "Max, you can't get but a, uh, one bath on this lot. It's so cut up with the back sets, 40 foot right away, that you can't put a house on it." Now, when you look at the tax record, it's 5.8, 5.9 wide, and you can build from side to side. That's what I'm pissed about. They have been a bunch of conflict on this.
I still wanna know when the lot was actually platted, that's what I wanna, 'cause that answers a lot.
75, I think.
Way before any setbacks were...
Can you pull that up on there, can't you?
Yeah, I can check it, I checked it, I know all this, but, can you give what month is year 75?
And Kim maybe had better to answer this than I, but I think that, you know, there's probably code that says, you know, if we change the rules, we can't force people to abide by rules that we've come up with today, uh, in effect of things that happened 10, 20 years ago.
I understand. You can't make the, the two houses be 20-foot apart. I understand that. Whoever, when that house was built I live in, it was built on the line. I understand all that. Well, I don't understand how that house got approved to build that close to the property line with a house next door to it. That's the only thing I'm asking you. If it was done straight up, if it was just done by mistake, it slipped through y'all and didn't, just tell me. What I'm looking at...
He had to go through the help.
Oh, my God.
He had to go through the help department to get approved.
I understand that one, too. So right now, out there on that piece of property, on partial, what is this, C9E-014, we're gonna build a four-bedroom, five-bath, 6,800 square foot heated space, 2,106-foot unheated with pool. 10 years ago, when it was on the maps and stuff, it was 4.3 acres, today it's 5.9. I don't know how the property grows.
Well, we have no jurisdiction over that.
That's it.
I mean... This is beautiful, fine man.
That's it. Mine is that house that left.
Yeah.
So, when I get out here, this land under y'all is it. This house is set right here, comes down and even right there.
To Kentucky Lakeview, uh...
You think it's 10 foot off the line? Wouldn't bother me. No respect?
What if the roles were reversed? What if you have that block, you wanna build that house?
I have more decency to do something like that. I just go ahead and tell you.
But when you bought, you, if you look at this, you do your...
Sir, I just bought a house. I just bought a house.
I understand, but there was a lot next door to you that was not core property, right?
Correct. $800,000.
Okay. So if you owned that lot, shouldn't you be able to do, develop it and build on it?
I, I ain't saying he can't develop and build on it. I'm saying he should have kept the 10 foot off of it.
You've complained about the view, you've complained about the setbacks, so setbacks don't apply because this lot was planted, it was in the 70s, before the subdivision ordinance was put in place. We can't go back and change what happened then.
But y'all put in codes that could be enforced now?
Going forward.
You can't move by, he, his could have moved over 10 foot.
Well, he checked, obviously checked.
If that were the case, you would have had to move yours, too, because they were probably both platted at the same time.
I, I knew this was gonna come back at me, so I understand that, that is your position to say that. You go down, most of all these other ones that was built, they could have built on property line? Nah, they ain't on property line. I know some of them are. I, I just asked how this got through y'all and I know other ones, I, I just don't understand.
There's a lot of lake houses being built around here, and that, and these people do check these ordinances.
Sir, sir, like I said...
They check these site...
I'm 66 years old, I've been up here 45 years.
Well, I'm older than you are, but...
I know you are.
Anyways, they check these ordinances, they check these site plan dates and all this, and they know what they can do, so they don't have to really come through here.
But he did, 'cause he wasn't sure.
Well, prior to us getting a building inspector last year, or year before, whichever one, there was nobody out here even to check this stuff.
I know that, too. I was reading the house I built, I thought was built by somebody I knew built houses correctly. Sir, I know that. That house is built correctly. If I had built the house up here, I would have brought somebody from Jackson County who has to build by the building codes.
Building codes are state law. The setbacks is county ordinance.
Setbacks originally was set, forced by the State Fire Marshal's Office to keep 10 foot between the houses for safety issues, so fire departments can get down there between them.
I've been a volunteer fireman for over 30 years, so I'm willing...
I also, I was certified through the state.
I was.
So that's what the 20-foot come, to keep houses apart so fire wouldn't jump from one house to another.
And 10 foot between...
10 and 10 is 20.
That's not enough, lot counts.
That's why Barrie County is 15, Franklin County is 15, Madison County is 10, 15, and 35.
Most of these houses you can't get between, no matter the trees.
That's right.
It's not even an issue.
You know, it, it's like this. I made a promise that I'm gonna keep to it. If I didn't come in here and tell you my piece and what I, what I think, and I hope that's on TV, and I hope the taxpayers of this county understand that what could happen to them, I wasn't going to sleep at night. Now, I knew nothing was gonna get done, I knew that.
There's actually not any action that we can take.
No, no action you can do from me, but the next, next one, there are.
But they'll work that.
Change your ordinance, mister.
We can't go back...
Bennett, you change, add it in there, make an amendment, even on these old properties, they have to be a minimum 10 foot off the line, even if it falls under Sidney Moore, who's gone and passed away now.
There is, I know with 40-something of these subdivisions that don't reply to setbacks, so you won't kill all them people in the subdivision?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would.
They're looking at you.
I hope they are, too. I hope they are, too. I would tell them, because it's for your own good. You don't want somebody living on top of you.
No, I live, live more property than I don't care for lake, that's just me.
I understand that, too. I live in Jackson County, I live in Barrie County. I got four or five acres at Beach Place. Just left the, uh, permit office in Barrie County. Walked in, handed the same class to the man, asked him the same question I just asked off, how could this be done? Asked him, could I change mine? If the man behind me agreed, let me do it. Looked at me and said, "Not in our county."
Question for you, Jim.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Did you tell him that... Did you tell him that the setbacks were not in existence at the time?
I did.
Okay. And what did he say?
He said they would enforce this. They would allow a house to be built on top of each other in Barrett County. Clad out. Would not allow it.
Well, they can do what they want to.
They can do what they want to, y'all do what y'all want to. And Mr. Teasley, I'm sorry that you had to sit there and listen to me, but you told me I could come.
Say what you wanna say.
You told me I could come.
Yeah, I did. And I need to come up here and look at it.
You can come say whatever you wanna say.
I can say whatever. So, so my question now, one more, one more. I own everything on left on Hugh Dorsey Road. I brought this man a plaque showing 100 by 300-foot building. With what y'all did here, he was allowed to build it, he can build 15 foot off the road, from what I, I understand now. Okay, are y'all gonna deny me of my building? Or am I grandfathered in? Which one am I in?
You're grandfathered in.
If, if that lot was planted, if it was planted...
If it was planted on property line.
If that lot was planted in 1975, just as these are, at the stories are saying.
That's what I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah.
So I can go property line, property line, 15 foot off road, and put my 100 by 300-foot building in.
Was the lot planted then, or has it been subdivided?
It don't, man.
I'm just asking you a question.
The whole lot was planted the same time.
Okay, well, you're good to go.
Knock yourself out.
I didn't know.
Well, we've had this in here before, some of them. I tell you, this is a building going around Paradise Point up there, and we just, nothing we can do about it.
Just make sure it's not in the right of way.
15 foot right away, correct?
I don't know.
Correct? 15 foot? I think that's what we discussed down there. Is it 15 foot?
15 foot off the road.
15 foot. But, you know, I probably wouldn't do that, and I probably wouldn't build it on the property line of the other owners.
Wouldn't have a whole lot of parkroom if you done that.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm 300 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. All right.
Anybody want to tell the age in Jackson County?
Nah. Marty Seager. All right, Tom Pro. Tom Pro.
Who does the party?
We do.
Tell you the number.
All right, here we go. Any other comment? If not, you can give a motion to, uh...
Make a motion, exiting to executive session.
You got a motion by Commissioner Fred? Huh? Oh.
Litigation.
Okay, and second by Commissioner Teasley. All in favor? It's five of eight.